Good evening and welcome to a special edition of the Planning Board's hearing today, December the 16th. The time now is 6:00 PM. I'm gonna do the invocation followed by the flag salute by Vice Chair Rosari. Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and give us the wisdom to engage in sound deliberation. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness for all. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and this great city. And please help us to accomplish our goals. In his name I pray, amen.
Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Board Member Gumbawa?
Present.
Board Member Liu?
Present.
Board Member Hadian?
Present.
Vice Chair Rosari?
I'm here.
And Chair Atukiniyan?
Present.
Any announcements?
No.
This is the time and place for the hearing on the appeal of the Community Development Director's decision on Project Number 18-0002721 concerning an application for development review and lot line adjustment request. The project site is located at 2321-2325 North Naomi Street. Before we begin, do any Planning Board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any Planning Board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
No.
No.
No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications as to this matter?
All correspondences that have been received are included as part of the staff report.
Then will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us, please?
If I could have the presentation, please? Good evening, Chair Atukiniyan and Planning Board members. Thank you for agreeing to the special meeting tonight. I'm Lisa Frank, Associate Planner in the Community Development Department. Tonight you are being asked to consider an appeal of the Community Development Director's approval of a development review, or DR, and lot line adjustment, LLA, request located at 2321 through 2325 North Naomi Street. The Director's approval was issued on April 18th, 2019, and the appeal was filed by one appellant, Joseph Fino, on July 3rd, 2019. Mr. Fino resides next to the project site on the north side. A little more on the project location. The project site is comprised of two separate properties adjacent to one another, 2321 and 2325 North Naomi Street. The site is situated within a residential area with Thornton Avenue to the north, Empire Avenue to the south, outside of the map area shown here, and a combination of single and multifamily developed properties on either side. Some additional landmarks in this surrounding area are Robert Lundigan Park and Fire Station 13 to the immediate north, and Robert Gross Park and the 276-unit Empire Landing Project to the south along Empire Avenue. So I just mentioned that there is a combination of single and multifamily developed properties within the immediate neighborhood. So this image here is a slightly more zoomed-in view to help illustrate that. On the right are shown primarily one-story, single-family residential structures and a mix of one- and two-story structures, including a number of multifamily residential structures, both along the subject block and directly behind to the west. The zoning in the area also corresponds to that general development pattern, where the residential properties to the east are zoned R1, single-family residential, while the properties along the subject block and to the west are zoned R4, high-density residential. The project before you tonight would include demolition of three existing dwelling units among the two properties, a lot line adjustment to merge two separate adjacent properties into one approximately 13,708 square foot site, and construction of eight new two-story residential dwelling units with individual semi-subterranean parking garages and associated improvements, including landscaping, side yard walls, lighting, and excavation engrading for the parking. This image depicts the overall site plan for the project. There would be one driveway centrally located with the four units on either side and two-car garages for each unit. The blue shape represents the approximate first-story footprint, and the red shape outlined represents the second story. So as you can see, the two front units connect above the semi-subterranean parking level below. The common open space is towards the rear of the property, as well as two uncovered required guest parking spaces and trash and recycling areas. And since it's not evident from this viewpoint, the guest parking and trash areas are at level with the driveway and the open space is about five feet above on level with the first story. This image depicts the proposed front elevation facing Naomi Street. The colors on the left, they're a little bit light, hopefully you can see them, help to illustrate the different levels. So the light gray at the bottom is the above-grade portion of the parking garages, which is about five feet. The light orange is the first story, the blue is the second story, and the gray at the top is the area of the roof forms. The overall height from existing grade is about 30 feet 6 inches, where the maximum -- to top of roof, where the maximum allowed is 35 feet. Overall, the design uses traditional elements consistent with much of the neighborhood, such as hipped roof forms, delineated first and second stories, windows and doors proportionate in size to the overall building form, and material finishes, primarily stucco, that are comparable to what you'd find in the neighborhood. Additionally, staff worked at the applicant to add some extra architectural interest to the front-street-facing facade by incorporating front porch stoops for the two end units. And this image shows a sample rendering to help show the overall design en masse-ing. As part of the standard development review procedure, city staff evaluated the project for its consistency with the applicable R4 zoning regulations, which is also one of the two findings for DR. Following multiple rounds of review and staff-directed revisions over the course of several months, staff ultimately deemed that the project before the board tonight is in compliance with the R4 standards. This includes the allowable density, a maximum of eight units for a site of this size, setbacks, lot coverage, height, common and private open space, parking, guest parking, and landscaping. Additionally, due to the proximity to R1 properties across the street, the applicant was subject to some additional restrictions for allowable lot coverage, height and number of stories, and second-story front setbacks. The project is also conditioned to comply with the Burbank Inclusionary Housing Regulations. The second finding for DR deals with the proposed project relative to the existing or intended neighborhood character. As noted in the slide showing the project location previously, the surrounding residential neighborhood is a mix of properties with single and multifamily residential structures. And this slide is some additional photos of some of the street views, again identifying that there are a combination of single-family residential properties as well as multifamily structures along the block. And the project's consistency with the applicable findings are fully detailed in Exhibit D to your staff report. As required, a community meeting for the project was held on February 4th, 2019. Approximately six residents were in attendance, including the appellant. Some of the primary concerns that staff heard at the meeting related to availability of street parking, or lack thereof, potential for overcrowding of the units, and general neighborhood compatibility concerns. The appellant in particular noted that he was concerned about his privacy being negatively impacted by the project. And just to clarify, his residence is one-story. Following the community meeting, staff took into consideration the concerns that were highlighted and identified where possible changes could be made. Staff felt that it was within reason to have the developer reconfigure the window placement along the second story on the north side adjacent to Mr. Fino's property. This image attempts to depict that change, where the bedroom windows, which were the main concern, as opposed to the bathroom windows, were -- went from about 5 feet 8 inches from the front -- from the property line, shown on the left, to 9 feet from the property line. So the floor plan was switched so that the bedroom windows were further away from the property line. Additionally, hedges were added along the side property line for some additional screening and privacy, and those can be grown up to a maximum of 12 feet outside of the front yard. Throughout this time, staff communicated with Mr. Fino regarding these changes, as well as his general concerns. In addition to the zoning regulations, staff considered the project's consistency with the general Burbank 2035 general plan, and specifically the land use and housing element goals and policies. Although the project site is zoned R4, high-density residential, the site has a general planned land use category designation of medium-density residential, which allows for a maximum of 27 dwelling units per acre. The eight units is consistent with the density range for us -- the projects -- the size of the lot, excuse me. The land use element also includes policies to encourage a variety of housing types within the city, as well as using tiered densities based on lot size so that lot assemblage, such as in the case here, could occur in some instances. In addition, state law requires that a city's housing element identify properties where future housing can realistically occur. At the time of the last housing element update, which covers 2014 through 2021, the project site was identified, among others, as a potential site for additional housing at a medium-density scale, as is being requested here. And that port -- that excerpt from the housing element was included in your Exhibit J. And then we previously looked at the surrounding zoning, and now this image shows the general planned land use map for the area, again where you can see the transition from the single-family area to the east, to the subject block, which is at a medium-density land use designation in the orange, and high-density west of that. In summary, staff determined that the project was consistent with applicable zoning regulations, project findings, and the Burbank 2035 general plan and housing elements. And accordingly, staff approved the project on June 18th, 2019. Following staff's approval, Mr. Fino filed an appeal within the 15-day appeal period. As shown in Exhibit H, the appellant stated that the combined lot size of the project was not consistent with the scale or proportion of other properties on the block in the neighborhood, and that underground parking was not consistent. As I mentioned during a previous slide showing the window revisions, staff was in communication with the appellant throughout this time, the emails for which were included in your Exhibit K, and staff came to understand that despite the window changes, the appellant was ultimately not content with the project. However, as of the writing of this report, I wanted to note the fact that the appellant did inform us that he had a change of heart, he wanted -- and wanted to withdraw his appeal. Staff informed the appellant that we would still need to hold the hearing as scheduled due to the BMC Appeal Procedures, which state that an appeal cannot be withdrawn on or after the 20th day prior to the scheduled hearing. So as such, the public notices went out as required, and we have heard from -- and I corresponded with one community member during that time. And that was included in Exhibit L. In conclusion, staff recommends the following action, that the board approves a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank denying an appeal of the Community Development Director's approval of Project Number 18-0002721 for a development review and lot line adjustment request for a proposed eight-unit multifamily residential development, therefore approving the project. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Well, the next item is for the appellant, Mr. Joseph Fino, to have his turn and basically make his presentation. But as I understand it, Mr. Fino is not present tonight, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Yes, that's correct. And in the correspondence in your exhibit, most recently, he did note that he was not likely to attend the hearing.
All right. All right then, before we open the hearing to the public, I will invite the -- again, the applicant or representative. Is there a representative or Mr. Fino here tonight?
We're community members, but we're not representing him per se.
All right. Having heard or seen none, we will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. Do we have any cards? All right, Stephanie, I can't read your handwriting as far as the last name. If you could state your last name also, please?
I apologize. Gagne.
Gagne. Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess we're few and far this evening. We have just a few concerns with the project. We live directly in front of the building that is going to go up, where we previously had two single-family homes that were on those lots. So it's a big deal for us for many reasons, as you could imagine, you know, property The main concerns for us truly is the fact that these eight units are going to have three bedrooms each unit. They have two parking spots assigned to each unit and two guest parking spots. As it is of now, there are many times at night where I come home from work and there are no street parking, so...
Especially on the night before trash gets picked up?
Well, not only that, there are gatherings, anytime there's a gathering, there is no -- so I'm concerned that it's going to be a lot more traffic on the street, obviously, with three bedrooms. And what happens in the case that the units, you know, may have several people living in them, that's a concern to us as well.
Perhaps more people than, you know...
Sir, if you wanna -- if you wish to make comments, approach the mic, state your name, and make your comments.
Sorry, Kevin Baker. One of our main concerns really is, you know, that there aren't two or three people living in each one of these places, that there might be six, eight, 10 people living in some of these places. I mean, I can take you down some of the houses on our street that currently have quite a few people living in a small apartment or house. So that would in turn affect, obviously, parking, noise, congestion. There's additional development happening on the other end of our street, which that's -- I don't know when that's gonna take place, but that's gonna create more of the same. We have parks on both sides of our street, people park on our street to go to the park. We have rideshare, Uber, Lyft kinda camping out on our street and some of the side streets in our area, waiting for the calls to deliver people to the airport, pick them up from the airport, so... Yeah, so, yeah, leaving, absolutely. They'll park there and say, okay, well, I'm not gonna get a ticket on, you know, Thursday, so I'll park there the rest of the week, take my flight out, do my business, come back, grab my car, I don't have to pay $10 to park down the street with airport parking. So I think all of those things combined is just adding to the congestion on the street, and there's our time.
Thank you.
There you go. Thanks, guys.
Diana Rosero?
Good evening, my name is Diana Rosero, and thank you for having us today to be able to address some concerns. I actually was present at the community meeting, and I think we all know that this project is gonna go up. I think that one of my main concerns is more so along the lines of a request that our community meetings actually be videotaped. I think one of the things that is very sad in this staff report is not mentioning the things that these homeowners are told at these community meetings in order to get their buy-in on these projects. I heard everything from permitted parking reviews to the 24-bedroom, 16-bathroom apartment complex adding value to people's homes at the time of sale, which we know that is not true. And these things cannot be told to homeowners in the presence of public officials that they pay for with their property taxes. It may be borderline illegal for this to be happening to residents when they're being misled in this way. I don't know if any of you have actually driven by the site, but there is nothing about this site that is conforming to this neighborhood. In fact, one of the properties that they purchased is zoned and use code for a single-family residence. The other one that they bought was zoned and use code is for a duplex. So combining this lot line is going to be able to make this project a commercial building with 24 bedrooms and 16 bathrooms. Now, we understand that it is in a density area. However, what I still don't understand is how you get homeowners in one room with developers and city staff and allow for certain information to be told to them that just eats up their time and their doing their due diligence as people who do not understand all these different codes that you as planning, city as employees, and developers as experts do understand. I think that it is a lesson to be learned that whenever there's a community meeting that is being held by public officials, we record this so that people cannot then come back and say, "I never promised that we would look into permitted parking," for the exact same reasons that the previous speaker stated. These homeowners went one by one and said all of the things that you will hear tonight, and I was there when they were promised that these things would be looked into. I don't know that they were, I don't know that they will be, but I do think that we can do better by our residents. I am a Realtor, and I think that we have a fiduciary duty before we sell property to make sure that homeowners know that when they have a 24-bedroom, 16-bathroom apartment complex, it does not add value to your home at all. That's it. Thank you.
Leti Montero?
Good evening, I'm Leti Montero. I've been at Naomi Street for over 20 years, and I've been dealing with this high Lisa. And it's very sad what you guys are doing to our street. There is no parking like the previous person said. I just had an incident a couple weeks ago. I wake up early in the morning to go to work at 4:00, and somebody was literally blocking my driveway. And unfortunately, that person didn't even live there. So that parking that you guys are providing for those apartments is not enough. And the pictures you guys were showing, the street was empty. Why don't you guys take pictures when the street's packed? That was it. Thank you.
I can't make out the first name, but I think the last name is Baker? Oh. He must be a doctor. Maria -- Maria Barbara?
Good evening, my name's Maria Barbara, and I've been a resident on Naomi Street for 33 years now. We've been there forever, and with this new proposed building on our street, as everybody's mentioned before, parking is a huge issue. People move, and like right now, parking is a little bit better because we had a family move out of one of the apartments. But normally, parking is awful. Anytime after 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, if you have -- if you don't -- not even parked, it's really, really bad. People speed through our street a lot, and we've been told that we can't do speed bumps on our street because of the fire station. Like they mentioned too, the two parks, people park on our street, and then when they start construction, if they're gonna be -- if there's gonna be construction on the corner, either on both corners, it's gonna be impossible to get through the street when the city's working on like the trees or anything like that. It's already, you know, it takes up, like for instance, today they were covering potholes, and it was kinda blocking. But I mean, that was a quick thing. Long-term, if they're building a building, it's gonna be really impossible to get through. Parking's gonna be even worse because they'll have big trucks parked out on the streets or dumpsters or what have you. And then, you know, but there's a lot of kids in our neighborhood. They're not always out, but people walk their dogs all the time on our street, they go jogging, they do different things, and I really feel like this is gonna have a negative impact on everybody, from people that casually just, you know, go on a daily walk to the residents that, you know, like parking, I think, is our number-one issue, and then overcrowding on our street as well. So that was my two cents. Thank you.
George Guero?
Hello, Chairman and the Planning Board. Thank you for hearing the appeal tonight. Some interesting concerns being brought up. I mean, who has not been in a situation where they have to walk a few blocks because there's no parking, and then someplace, some communities, there's no parking and you have to pay to park? And I'm not really concerned about that with this project because I think it's rare for a household to have more than two cars. That's kind of, it seems little, very -- it seems to me like the exception rather than the rule, number one. This project is being built with the requisite amount of parking. According to my understanding, the developers are not asking for a variance for less parking than normal. So that's one thing to bring up. If there's a problem with parking enforcement, then that's a problem with parking enforcement. That doesn't seem to me a problem with expanding housing, especially when we're in a state of emergency where we need more housing. We need more housing, and building new buildings and adding new development, I think, is generally accepted that it increases property values. If you look at, for instance, the Americana, being -- living across the street from the Americana, that undoubtedly increases your property value. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. So that's another concern, that I think -- I think that a lot of these concerns are personal, and they're coming from, they're coming from, you know, a bona fide belief that there's gonna be less parking, and I just think that the, in this case, the benefits of a new development outweigh the cost. There's lots of cities where, say for instance in downtown, you have a skyscraper, of course parking is gonna be hard. That's what's gonna happen whenever... Of course, parking is gonna be hard. That's, that's what's gonna happen whenever there's growth. In fact, we all hate traffic, but they say that traffic is actually correlated with economic, with economic prosperity. So what do you want? Do you want the good economy or do you want no traffic? And the, the choice is clear. Thank you.
Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Yes, I would like to make a few comments from some of the things we just heard. Obviously, there's a, there's a real concern about the street parking. It's understandable, but as I mentioned, the project is providing code-compliant parking. In fact, the parking garages that the applicant has provided are in excess of the minimum dimensions required per code. So I just wanna mention that because again, there, there, we cannot require, we're not in a position to ask for, excuse me, additional parking beyond what was required per code. It would also make the site increasingly difficult to develop with all the other restrictions that are in play. There was a mention about use code. I just wanna be very clear that the LA County Assessor Use Code is distinct from the zoning of the property. So the zoning of the property is R4 high-density residential. The general plan land use designation is medium-density residential. What is currently developed on the property and as well as the case in other properties along the block doesn't necessarily reflect the R4 development, but it reflects what could be built there. And that is, that is why the applicant has proposed eight units because that is consistent with what the zoning and intended general plan land use designation allows for. The project does include three-bedroom units. That was a decision by the, the developer presumably related to making the project work financially. Again, our general plan does have policies and goals that speak to providing for a variety of housing types for all types of households, including families. I think that's, the only other thing I would just add is that staff is not in the practice of making comments about the impact on, on the property value. Thank you.
Chair, if I can just augment Mrs. Frank's comments. The other component I think that was discussed regarding construction activity. So when new projects of this magnitude get proposed, they have to submit a construction management plan that shows how they're going to secure the site, there's gonna be demolition work and construction activity, how it's designed to basically augment its operations onsite. And as part of that, what I mean is they have to basically be able to do demo work, staging, onsite staging of material. And then as they build up the platform, which is basically the semi-subterranean, and they go into the wood frame construction, typically what you have is situations where they actually park within the subterranean portion as they're building up because it's wood frame, it's a two-story above podium, semi-subterranean. So that's part of what they'll have to, they, the developer will have to provide that information to the city for, as part of their plan check. What we do require them to do is to also post a notification with a phone number of a contact person. So if the neighbors have issues with construction activity, noise, if they're starting construction prior to the hours of operation that are allowed in their construction and noise regulations, they have a contact person. We did that with the Cedar Project. This is a similar situation. The project will result in the removal of one driveway apron to actually add parking to the street in combination with, in combination, so they're gonna take out two driveways and in essence, create one center driveway aisle and adding space on both sides of the property. The other issue with parking, which I think kind of goes beyond the project, I think there was some discussion regarding airport parking, parking for multiple days. I believe at that community meeting, there was some discussion regarding if there was an interest from the neighbors to look at a parking district and as part of that parking district to actually reach out. I don't know if we communicated how you go about doing that process, but we can do that subsequent to the meeting. It's through Public Works. There's actually, you go to the city engineer, uh, city traffic engineer and there's a process to petition to basically establish a parking district so that may alleviate some of the congestion. It's not gonna solve it all. Lisa did bring up a good point is that for all intent and purpose, this particular project meets all the requirements of the city code all the way across the board. The merger of the parcels, how it's occurring through a lot line adjustment is actually permitted under our state, our city code as well as the subdivision map act. And we are very limited in the breadth and depth of what we can do in that analysis. So I just wanna make sure it's well aware that for all intent and purpose, the project as proposed is fully code compliant, consistent with the general plan. You saw the excerpt. It was identified as an opportunity site in the city's housing element for development. So with that, I just wanted to kinda close the loop on those issues.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Ramirez. Does the board have any question of staff since the applicant's not here? The applicant.
Correct, correct. The applicant's here, not the appellant.
I read the appellant. I apologize. Does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You may have maximum time of 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Good evening, Chair Altekinian and Planning Board members. I wanna say thank you for getting this special Planning Board hearing on the calendar. The Planning Board is, the Planning Department has spent a lot of time on many projects throughout this ordeal with going, looking at our plans and we appreciate all the hard work from both Lisa, Fred, Patrick, and all Planning Board members. As a team, both my partners and I feel like our, the project that we are proposing is corresponding to the neighborhood. The lots are R4, high-density. And by right, originally, we were looking to develop nine units. Going back and forth, we were able to actually arrange for onsite public open space and reduce a, a unit size. And throughout the process, I was, I always follow up on council meetings and Planning Board hearings on other projects and looking into it further. If we were to look, if we were just looking at maximizing the number of units or the size, as my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we could have asked for a state density bonus and actually built 14 units. That's something that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, especially the people in the, in the, in the neighborhood because we designed the project, taking into consideration the impact that would have on our neighbors, adjacent and next to, on, on all sides. The appellant Joe had concerns. We redesigned the placement of the windows. We added hedges. There was concerns about parking. What we did is we removed the, like it was an office on the first, like the parking grade level, which, as Lisa mentioned, our parking is now oversized. It's not the 19 by 19 clearance. So depending on how big somebody's vehicles are, they could possibly fit a third vehicle in there, if not four. So if somebody's driving a large Suburban, that might not work, but usually these days, mini-compact vehicles could actually fit more than two vehicles in the parking that we're designing. We didn't go for a 24-bedroom apartment building. We were looking to build townhomes for Burbank families. Three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bed townhomes that Burbank families could come, rent, and put their kids in the, in, in Burbank Unified School District, you know, benefit with all the beautiful parks and features that the city of Burbank offers. I'm a Burbank resident. Everybody in my team is, are Burbank residents and we wanted to propose a building that was not just for maximizing profit. I, I saw some, you know, some people think of developers as just a money-making machine, but that's not the reality. We didn't build these to sell them, to take a profit. We are trying to develop this small project to provide housing for Burbank families. And eight townhomes is a lot better than 14 apartment buildings. 14 units in an apartment building with a massive podium deck and three stories on top. We're going two stories on a semi-sub, five-foot clearance from the grade level, two stories on top, 30-foot high, where we could go up to 35. We really try to take into consideration everything that we can to make sure this building is, you know, is gonna work for both our team and not affect the, the neighborhood and the community in any negative manner. We appreciate all the hard work that everybody puts in here. Thank you to Fred, Lisa, Patrick. And if you have any other questions or concerns, I'll be happy to address them. Thank you very much.
To be fair, I think I passed the applicant earlier. I read appellate again, I guess. I'll brush up on that for the next hearing. If you'd like, you can make additional comments at this point since you have additional time. We never gave you the opportunity to speak. Do you wish to make any additional comments? Yes. No? All right. Now, does the board have any questions of staff or the applicant? Mr. Rosori.
Thank you, Chair. Just the staff. The, the community meetings, are these put on by the applicant or are they put on by the city?
They are hosted and facilitated by the city. They're designed to be informational. They're pretty informal and just allow for anybody who's interested to attend and ask questions or concerns, but it is not hosted by the developer.
And is there note-taking done at that, those meetings to make sure that? I'm just trying to address the issue of maybe, should we videotape these things? Or, or do you think that things might be said loosely that promise is made? Do you think in the future we, we should videotape them?
I think the, the informal setting for the, for the community meetings are such that a lot of things are discussed. There's a range of things that are presented there. But more often than not, what, what it's an opportunity to, to do is to have the residents that show up to actually talk directly to the developer, discuss things that maybe could be incorporated in the project or flag their concerns. We are there, we're, we're participating in the meetings. So we do the note-taking, but does the comments or feedback beat, that are, the dialogue that's going on between the developer and the residents fall to a point of a guarantee? Nothing is guaranteed. Whatever is actually conditioned on the project in the case of the letter, that's what has been agreed to and what the staff is approving. But beyond that, it would have to be something that, you know, the developer in essence says, yeah, I'm willing to do XYZ and I'm gonna incorporate into that. But being a part of that meeting, I, I did participate in that meeting. There was discussion regarding certain issues that were brought up today, but there was nothing that was effectively agreed to and said, oh, you know, we're gonna buy this or buy permits or XYZ. It was, these are concerns, these are some of the things we'd like you to consider. But my recollection of that meeting based on the information was items were identified and staff went back, worked with the developer as best we could within the parameters of the code to try to address the concerns.
And, and my second question is regarding permit parking. Permit parking is fairly cumbersome to get. Is there a streamlined version that we can offer? Is there anything that we can do to, to?
We can, I, I mean, based on the concerns, one of the things that we will do in follow-up is to actually reach out to our colleagues in Public Works, the Traffic Engineering Division, to have them take a look. I believe they mentioned speed bumps or, you know, the restrictions. I've, I've seen instances where even where staff has said, no, don't put the speed bumps in, when there's been enough of a community concern where the residents go directly to the council members regarding that issue, that's actually been installed. So I, I think there's some flexibility there. We just need to look at it a little bit further. And I, I can tell you this, we will follow up on both those concerns with traffic engineering. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Gambau.
Hi, thank you for your presentation, Lisa. A quick question on the, the Exhibit J from that inventory report. It listed as R3 at the December 2013. Did it go to R4 as part of the general plan update that year?
Thank you for your question. Just to clarify, are you looking at the column that says, uh, general plan and then medium density?
Yeah, and then the zoning next to it.
Oh, I see. Okay. I don't, I'd have to double-check. I don't, it was my understanding that it had been R4, but the, it was in terms of the allowable density, they applied the, the 27 units per acre per the, the general plan designation that was determined at that time. But I'd have to double-check if the zoning actually changed. My understanding is it, it didn't, so that might be possibly a mistake.
We'd have to confirm, uh, board member, because I know there were changes at that time in 2013 where certain properties were downzoned and others were upped. And we used to have an R5 prior to 2013, which doesn't exist anymore. So we'd have to confirm what they did in this particular inventory, if you're familiar with these. What they did is they took the underlying development potential of the sites. And as you can see, it's not all the parcels, but there's a, an anticipation based on what's showing here of potential merger of parcels over time with the development potential. This was sufficient to address the concern from the state that we needed to find our opportunity sites to meet our regional housing need obligation number. But in general, the underlying zoning that exists for, exists currently is the R4 classification with the general land use designation that allows the 27 units to the acre.
Correct.
Masadia.
I have a question for staff on Exhibit G1. The new setback after the community meeting is proposed five feet and nine feet, but the first one was much less. They did comply with average setback calculation on the first design, right? But they made it better on the second setback, average setback after the community meeting?
If I'm understanding your question, they were previously in the image shown on the top, that did comply with the average setback requirement. But within the average setback requirement, they have some leeways to how they arrange the actual floor plan layout.
And they made it better.
Yes, and so following the community meeting, the revision to the floor plan was specifically looking at where the bedrooms and the bedroom windows were situated as it relates to those different average setbacks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I now declare the hearing closed and the Planning Board will now deliberate. What's your pleasure? Vice Chair Rosori.
I, I could say that in light of our recent ADU meeting, I, I feel those concerns about parking, congestion, all those things. However, when you're in R3, R2, R4 zone, it does provide you the protections that you might have in R1, which is fleeting, even in R1. So I, I think that this project is, is designed to be built in the area that it's in. And because of our incredible need for housing, I think, and, and the fact that this, this developer has done everything that he could to make it palatable for the residents and it's virtually by right, I'm gonna move forward with this project.
Masadia.
I'm also in support of the project, but let's take this opportunity to address over review of the projects for multifamily zones. We should be more flexible with these type of projects because as of now, these are the most straightforward and square type of projects versus what's going on with the new ADU law and the single-family zone and versus the plan development that they can actually overrule the zoning and development standards. These are in fact the projects that look into everything. They have to comply with FAR lot coverage, maximum height, average setback calculation, permeable surfaces, landscape area, and more. It takes a project many months to reach to the review point and just a set, average setback calculation, taking the most of the major time of the project. These projects, when, when These projects, when, when we review, they're deemed complete. While right now, anyone being against a multifamily project on a designated multifamily zone should consider this, next year, beginning of next year, the new ADU law will actually converting R1s to R3, and those projects do not need any review, um, not as extensive as, as what we do on multifamily, and they do not have to comply with so many things. Minimum setback is required, no parking is required, and, um, they have to actually receive their permit within sixty days. While, look at the application for this project, let's say just an example, it's filed in April 2018, almost two years, and we're, we're imposed by the new ADU law by state just because we're not doing our homework right. If we really did care, not, I don't wanna say cared, if we were faster in developing more multifamily projects on the designated zone for multifamily, then we would have more housing, and the housing shortage, shortage wouldn't be an issue. Uh, so I take this opportunity to just, um, express my support for multifamily projects on multifamily zones. Thank you.
Ms. Lu?
I agree with my fellow board members of, about this project, um, I would just say, like, for, uh, permanent parking, restrictive parking, and also speedhumps, just, there's a process, you know, you, you'll have to go get your neighbors to, to sign a petition, um, and then the city would do some evaluations, but it is doable, and, um, I hope that this will help with some of the issues that you've brought up tonight.
Mr. Gambola?
I'd like to, uh, second that comment about just this process, two years, is when you wonder why the state comes in and trying to override things, it's because a process like this, when everything's by the rules and within allowable, you know, development, it's taken two years to, almost two years to get to this point, so, and that's a kind of indictment about the whole process and where some of those things come from. I think in terms of parking, I, I hope that they can work out a deal, work out a situation to get, manage the bad parking and the bad actors on that street, um, but at the end of the day, every unit has a parking assigned to them, whether it's your garage, your driveway, wherever that you have to park with your home, so the street parking is, is that free-for-all. It's unfortunate that it's maybe big and, or, or, um, busy and, and hard to find spots, but it's, that's not a guarantee, the property, your property ends at the property line with whatever space you have for parking, so I think, uh, it's those things we have to trade off with, you know, what, where does your property end and where does the city property start?
The one thing that was kind of, uh, disappointing was, we get these projects and we have residents come and voice their concerns, but to me, it seems that it's too little, too late, it is not this building that's creating the parking issue. From my understanding, the parking issue exists, and it's been there for a while. Now, the question is, why nothing was done about the parking situation up to this point? Why wait until a project is trying to come online before residents voice their concerns regarding parking? Now, I'm not saying that's exactly what happened here, but there's few of you here today, and, and I, I strongly suggest, there's power in numbers, I strongly suggest that you pursue this with the city, with the proper departments, Mr. Ramirez already committed himself on the record, and it's on video, so you could play that back or take it with you next time, and I'm sure he will do his best to reach out to the departments that could lend a hand as far as the parking's concerned. Now, show me a s- city in, let's say, California, like Los Angeles or some other, Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, Northridge, wherever you wanna go these days, that does not have a parking issue. In fact, I see this project as solving some of the parking issues, and the reason for that is because I don't know where those individuals who lived in, in those buildings, in the houses, or the triplexes, or the two houses and the, the single family parked. I'm gonna assume they're parked on the street. Uh, if everyone parked at their residences, that means the entire street is now basically open for the public, and for there to be a problem, parking problem, when the entire street is open to the public, there's really a parking problem. What did the residents do about it up to this point? Not building this building will not solve the parking problem, nor it's gonna make it worse, the problem is there. And additionally, the fact that the developer went to the extent of, instead of building fourteen, as we heard, is now building eight units. Granted, some are three bedrooms, but obviously, the intent is to have families, family members, such as, you know, children having their own bedroom, or two, uh, two children, maybe not, have each one of them having their own bedroom. Uh, thirty-foot elevation versus thirty-five, the maximum that they could go, um, the hedges, the redesign, the setbacks, the open space, uh, and the provided parking. So all in all, and, and the articulation on the building was quite nice, it was presentable, it wasn't a, just a, a, a box that was just being thrown there so they can collect money, and obviously, the fact that these are not subdivided and they're not for sale today kinda means that the developer's looking for a long-term, uh, I guess, uh, they're vested in this project, and based on what I see and the number of years it's taking for them to get through this project, I can imagine it's gonna take a long time for them to get a decent return on that investment. And I, I, I'm not an expert on, uh, property values, but I do have, uh, some, I guess, opinion about it. I think any new development that upgrades the structures, that upgrades the street, the lighting, the landscaping, I think it adds value, and, uh, the fact that the appellant, uh, is not here tonight, seems that he was satisfied with the, uh, cooperation he received from the developer and the city in addressing his concerns. Uh, it's a genetic concern, parking, and, uh, we all suffer from the same, uh, problem, there's not enough parking in California, major cities, of course, rural areas excepted. But that doesn't mean that we're gonna be stopping every single development that comes along, and they're providing the parking. So in that regard, I would be, uh, in favor of denying the appeal and, uh, having the project move forward. Vice Chair Rosari?
I can make the appropriate motion if you'd like, Chair.
Please.
A resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank, denying an appeal of the community development directors' approval of project number eighteen dash zero 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 two seven two one for development review and lot line adjustment request for the proposed eight-unit multifamily residential development, therefore approving the project.
Second?
Board Member Gambola?
Aye.
Board Member Lu?
Aye.
Chair Atikunian?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rosari?
Yes.
Board Member Hadian?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, now we'll move on to oral communications, oral communications are limited to three Does anyone wish to address the board at this time? Having seen, having, not having, okay, no one. Reports, Mr. Ramirez?
Uh, there are no reports.
All right, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the November eighteenth meeting and the December ninth meeting.
I can move the minutes.
Go ahead, Mr., uh, Vice Chair Rosari?
A second.
Okay.
Board Member Gambola?
Yes.
Board Member Lu?
Aye.
Chair Atikunian?
Um, I'm gonna abstain as to the November eighteenth, but, uh, yes, as to December ninth.
Vice Chair Rosari?
Yes.
And Board Member Hadian?
Aye to November eighteen, abstain, uh, for December nine.
All right, Planning Board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place the item on a future agenda. Vice Chair Rosari?
Chair, thank you. Um, again, in light of the recent, uh, ADU rules and regulations, I've been spending a lot of time thinking about what, what we can do for our city, and what I'd like to see on a next, on a very soon agenda, is a study and maybe a recommendation to our council to increase our housing stock. Um, residential home prices and, and rent prices are a simple function of supply and demand, there are, uh, there are plenty of small to medium-sized builders out there that would like to either, just like tonight's example, um, condense properties or assemble properties, and I, I think we should come up with a plan to, and even if it's a temporary plan, um, to streamline the process and allow them to build multifamily units in multifamily zones, twelve, fifteen, twenty units, condos for sale, and reduce some of the cumbersome permit requirements and density issues, and I think we should try to do a fast-track process to add stock to our housing and to hopefully, again, supply and demand, bring rent prices down and, and prices in general down, and I'd like to see that as soon as possible, and I think, I think our council, I think our council would be primed to, to look at such a, such a recommend- recommendation from us.
Along the same line, um, as Mr. Gambola pointed out, it should not take two years for a project of this size from start to just being ready to pull permits. Um, so I think the word fast-track, maybe, uh, I mean, I don't know, probably six months. Any project like this should not take more than six months for review, development, and so forth and so on, once it's submitted. I'm not criticizing, I'm not passing judgment, I know there is, there's, uh, budgetary concerns, restrictions, personnel, uh, shortages, and so forth and so on, but this is what's creating the backlog and, uh, issues that we're facing, and I recommend to all those out there who are watching, get involved, if there are concerns on your streets, whether it be parking, any type of a city service that may be addressed, please address it ahead of time, contact your, uh, local officials, find the right people to talk to, so that you can, um, try and resolve the issue before the development comes along. I, I guess that had nothing to do with future agendas, I don't know why I'm even saying it, so anyway, uh... Mr. Ramirez, any comments?
I don't know if the rest of the boards, maybe, I don't know if they're, they're gonna give additional.
Any additional comments by the, that's enough.
So, if I may, and it's not on the agenda, so I'm gonna keep it short, uh, you have a density bonus ordinance and inclusionary housing ordinance, that's gonna be coming to you in the first quarter of this coming year. I think if you talk about streamlining, if anywhere it's gonna happen, it's gonna be there, because as you're aware, we did a, a density bonus project that took eighteen months to process, and it wasn't because of a lack of effort on staff, it's because we need to provide, we need clarity when it comes to the projects that are gonna be deemed to be by right, in other words, approved by staff, and those that are, that potentially could be approved by the board, like with incentives, concessions, or waivers, and if we can do that, then I think you'll see an uptick in development and quality development.
And I, I'd be looking forward to see any other recommendations that we can not put into play, but at least consider, and, and see where, where else can we make the process a little bit less burdensome, and, and see if we can't get, you know, some housing stock here for our residents.
I agree, and I think that's the vehicle I would offer up to you, just because of the resources that we have, is that if we start there, that'll be a segue into facilitating opportunity sites for consolidation, and what they call the missing middle of development, which is the smaller types of projects in these areas, similar to what was talked about tonight. So we'll, we'll bring that to you, it's coming, we've already done quite a bit of analysis there.
Yes, Ms. Lu?
So in regards to this language, do you have a plan for community engagement prior to it coming here?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, the, the ordinances, uh, are gonna go through a community workshop process, but they're gonna be coming to you for recommendations to council.
Fantastic, thank you.
And with that, we wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, we won't be meeting again until January, so have a safe and prosperous holiday and a new year.